Tonight is for the supervisors to discuss and vote on the UTV ATV issue. And just a few announcements, if you have a cellphone, please silence them or shut them off so that it doesn't disrupt the meeting. I do have an announcement regarding security has asked me to notify you that in the event that this room reaches capacity, we will have folks proceed to the people who are beyond the limit would proceed to courtroom three on the third floor to view a live YouTube streaming of this meeting. And we do want, I think, per our discussion with security, if there are seats available, we want everybody seated that's here for the meeting. So I see a couple of chairs, so I'm going to ask everybody to sit and we'll let security then direct people to their seats. And then one other thing with regard to, I know that some people have brought signs. I think that's a form of expression, but please do not hold them in front of anybody else. Want to make sure everybody can see and hear. So, you know, don't think we have a specific rule for or against signs. So I'm not gonna, certainly, I'm not gonna say that they're not okay if anybody has signs, but please be considerate of others. Okay? All right. Well, we're here to, for the supervisors to discuss the UTV ATV issue. I guess I'll start by saying that this is a, it's been a rather lengthy process, probably more than a couple of years altogether. I think, you know, we've had about five public meetings on this issue with lots of input. We formed a citizen committee, and I know there's a number of those committee members here. As a matter of fact, if you were on the committee, would you please raise your hand? Okay. Thank you all for your service. We received a extensive report, over 600 pages of information, bless you, from the committee, and that has been a resource for the supervisors to review. And again, thank you for that. However, and I think the committee, Dawn, I think the committee went, met either four or five times. Okay, so I think now it's time for the Board of Supervisors to make a decision on this, either to go forward with an ordinance or not to go forward with an ordinance. And I would say this, if we decide to go forward, that doesn't mean that there's UTVs and ATVs on county roads tomorrow. I think everybody understands that. If they don't, there will be a process if it does pass. If it doesn't, you know, our lives go back to whatever semi-normal status they were prior to this meeting. But, so, anyway, there would be a process and there would be staff involvement in a committee. And I think County Attorney May has pointed out that, you know, if it is passed, that the county could face liability if it didn't review roads and the suitability for those roads, traffic counts, that type of thing. So that certainly would be part of it. There's other issues involving safety and probably safety issues regarding operators, vehicles, et cetera. Again, that's if we go forward. If we don't, you know, we'll walk out of here. And I hope everybody, regardless how this turns out, everybody treat everybody with respect. This is a issue that, you know, has, I think, emotions on both sides. And, you know, I think that we're here hopefully tonight to sort this out, at least for now. So, anyway, I don't know if I'm the chair. I convened the meeting. It would probably be appropriate for me to let my counterparts speak if they're wanting to do so.
I think we're all waiting to hear what you have to say.
The, I would first like to echo what Supervisor Baker said as far as a thank you for those people that were on the committee and that took the time, that volunteered to go through the details and to basically research the position. And the document was hundreds of pages and the hours were many with that committee. And so I thank you. I also like to acknowledge everyone who sent me an email, everyone who called me, did even receive a few text messages as well, since our cellphones are out there, just related to it. And those were both for and against. And a few friends called and said, "What are you thinking?" And I said, "Well, if you don't really have a, so to speak, a horse in the race, we can talk and I'll, you know, bounce my thoughts and feelings off of them and get feedback." So I really feel good and I feel, I guess, a sense of government pride of the involvement that we had from our citizens. Because this is your decision, this is your roads, this is your community. And you elect us to represent you in those capacities, but at the end of the day, it, in my vantage point, it's the citizens that drive the needs and drive the desires and drive the decisions ultimately of the county. The other thing I would mention is that I've had an opportunity since I was both labeled the swing vote, which is probably true, so I didn't necessarily come out and say I was for or against it. I made a small public comment, I think, in the forum. So I had a chance to meet with individually both people that were for it and those that were against it. Some actually on the committees and some just, you know, in discussion. And probably those related to this discussion, the ones that are for and against probably don't hang around each other each and every day and probably don't say, "Hey, let's go to lunch and see if we can debate till we're red in the face about whether we should have ATV usage or whether we should continue the ban." But what I can tell you from my position as far as meeting and knowing and speaking with people on both sides is that their intents are good. And I think their actions and their beliefs are just what you expect from a good coworker or a good neighbor or a good relative. And so I would echo what Supervisor Baker said is that, you know, there's going to be a direction here and that direction will most likely not please everyone. And so I think if you can remember that those that are for or against and/or the people that are making decisions up here are hopefully doing those with their best interest in heart and your best interest in heart, but at the end of the day, you've got to make a decision. The other piece I would like to acknowledge is Sheriff Kennedy. And so he was early on, you know, a hard no on this and voiced that to us in a very small group. I remember one of the first times, it might have been maybe one or two people. And I remember him sitting in this chair and discussing with the county supervisors and having him share his perspective and share his personal experiences. And that has, that has weight for me and I respect that. We need leaders that are smart and strong. And he's both of those. We may not always agree, but that's what we need and I think that's what you would expect in your elected officials. So I have tremendous amount of respect for Sheriff Kennedy and all the law enforcement and all the emergency people related to Dubuque County. But just because he is taking a hard line position on this, he's my guy for county sheriff, whether I vote for or against this. I believe in him and I believe in the job that he has done. I guess the last piece that I was going to mention maybe to our, to my fellow colleagues is that what I was looking at and what it came down for me was weighing the safety issues with citizen access and citizen employment. And that was the juxtaposition that I kept going back and forth with as I spoke with people from both sides. And that would be, you know, my question to Supervisor Baker and Supervisor McDonough related to getting some feedback or certainly if they're interested in my opinion, talking more about that. And so if either of you two would be interested in discussing more about the safety vantage points, what you've learned or the, maybe the citizens' rights and access vantage point, I would, I would be interested in taking the conversation there.
I'd be happy to. One of the things that I have heard is that without an ordinance, there are, you know, concerns out there from folks. And I think some of the folks that were opposed to this were basing it on current, you know, usage that's not necessarily legal. And, you know, I just had one today talking about a town that has golf carts are allowable. And they gave an example of eight children piled on a golf cart with one, and they used quotes, supposedly responsible adult. Now, that was in a, that was in a town and I can understand that, you know, somebody being concerned about that. You know, I think one of the, one of the things probably is if, you know, the neighbor kids are out racing around, probably neighbors are not wanting to call in, that type of thing. But in a email that I got recently, actually a couple of them, but one of them was from our county engineer, Anthony Barjett. Anthony's not able to be with us tonight, but he has said in Delaware County that the folks who were promoting the ordinance in Delaware County have done a really good job of self-policing and, you know, keeping an eye on things, reporting violators and basically not wanting them to ruin, you know, their access rights that I believe they've had for two or three years now in Delaware County with very few issues. And that was also reinforced today by James Willey. I received an email from him and he, you know, he again talked about the enjoyment, the family fun that they've had with the UTVs, ATVs and that they self-police. And in the ordinance that they presented, which is part of the 600-page report, there were safety issues included for the vehicles and the operator. One of them that sticks out to me because, you know, I keep hearing about young kids operating UTVs and ATVs and I'm hearing, you know, 11, 12-year-olds. In the ordinance that was proposed, they would have to have a driver's license. That would make them 16 minimum, 17. And then I believe that they proposed if they were 16 or 17, they would also have to take a training course. And one of the emails that I got today was from a person who's a DNR-trained trainer, I guess, for lack of a better term. And so there are safety training courses available. If, my understanding under the proposed ordinance, if they're 18 or over, that, and they'd have to have a driver's license, would have to have insurance, just like if you were driving a car. And so-
Can I ask the chair a question? You're talking about a proposed ordinance. Is there one before us?
He was asking about, oh yeah, that was received a long time ago.
Do I have any benefit of that?
I believe it's in the report. Dawn, is this, is the proposed ordinance that the UTV ATV club, that is in the 600-page report?
So that can be counties that have ordinances?
Okay, but the proposed ordinance that was made to the Board of Supervisors?
Was it included?
Oh, I thought it was in there. Okay, I have a copy. I'd be happy to put it in front of him. So anyway, and then what I had said when we opened is if it passes, I think we need to have a thorough review of roads for traffic count. I can think of a few roads off the top of my head that I would want to not have the extra, you know, the UTV ATV traffic on. First one that comes to mind is Oakland Farms Road, sometimes referred to as Rollercoaster Road, south of Dubuque, near Key West. I think that would be one. I think Sundown Road, south of Highway 20, would probably, with the high traffic, because that's a connector between 151 and 20, there's others. And I think we would maybe be looking at getting input from different parts of the county for that.
Well, this is the first opportunity since the, I think, the League of Women Voters Forum that we've had in public to discuss this. Supervisor McDonough and I were both on the, I guess it was in the city council chamber. And at the time, I referred my decision to the advisory committee. And I know at that time Supervisor McDonough had stated that she was a no and she stated a couple of reasons for that. And I acknowledged that I thought that was a bold choice and I thought that's the type of leadership that we need, somebody that's bold in their decisions and confident in their decisions. So I acknowledged that. That said, if you have any additional questions or insights that you would want to share with me, I would be open.
Well, a couple of interesting things about that, actually. That citizen forum happened in late October and I was asked if I had to vote at that time specifically, how would I vote? And I said we were missing information, including the completion of the citizens' committee. And also there was no county attorney's legal opinion. I felt that was missing. I felt there was an insurance piece missing, that what was known to the public at large was missing some valuable pieces. And so if I had to decide at that time, I would be a no because I felt the information wasn't complete. You turned to me and said, "Great leadership." It's exactly what you said to me. And then you said, "I'm going to refuse to answer that question." And I think that's kind of still where we are, honestly. Those things have fallen in place, that county attorney's opinion, truth be told, Ralph Potter's opinion, I think, is dated like November 6th. So he issued his opinion very shortly after the election. So the election occurred, you all voted without benefit of a county attorney's opinion. I wasn't on the Board of Supervisors at that time. In no way was I able to, I asked County Attorney Ralph Potter where he was, we had discussion, we had lunch, but that was not something that I had any benefit of knowing before that election occurred. So that was news to me in terms of his written opinion. And CJ May's written opinion has been issued just last week. So those are things that I've tried to actively put before you in a transparent mode. The fact that you can go to our website and click on the full 600-page report, including Ron, all those petition names, that's because I asked Dawn repeatedly to please do that, to have our IT people make sure, even as a candidate, I felt that was important, that you needed to know all of the information that was being presented to the Board of Supervisors. And so that we're here referencing a, an ordinance that perhaps you've proposed, I don't know, that I don't have benefit of and you don't have benefit of, I think that's disappointing. That wouldn't, I think, lend itself to being, you know, transparency in what we're trying to decide tonight. Folks certainly know where I stand. You know, I've had lunch with folks, I've met individuals, I've sought out your comments, I listened to people last week, I feel you're my neighbors, I value your input. We have come to a different conclusion and that's okay. That's how this works, that's how the system works. So I don't feel I've ever attempted to be anything but truthful and transparent to you regardless of where you are in this issue. It's important that you feel that your elected officials, whether you voted for me or not, that we're listening. And that was probably the most hurtful thing that I heard in the meeting last week when 10 folks stood up and kind of did a shaky finger at me about how I've decided to announce that I am a no vote. That someone said, "You're not listening to us, you're not listening." I, I am listening to you, I am, I am seeking out your opinion. I have reached a different conclusion and that is not the same as not listening. So I'm hoping wherever this goes tonight, that you will work with me as a supervisor on issues that relate to your concerns. That's true to me. I wish we could work together beyond this issue on other things that confront our small cities and our towns. You know, we've convened meetings with mayors for the first time in many, many, maybe decades. We are meeting as supervisors with mayors to talk about small cities and towns, what's before your city council, what are your funding issues, what do you need to know, what can we do better? Invite us to your community so we can have our Board of Supervisors meetings in your church basements, in your city halls. We want to be out there, at least I do, listening to you on every level. So regardless of how you feel this impacts your local economy, if you're here from, and I know many of you are, from smaller cities and towns, we are listening to that and we have issue with trying to make that more robust. I know that the growth in Dubuque County is happening in our more rural areas. That is where the growth's occurring, that's where the jobs are happening, that's where industrial growth is occurring. So the city of Dubuque, I think, is, is interested in working with the county to grow the entire county, we're one county. So when I look at the factors that I decided, I am looking at the entire county. Whether you feel they're your roads or my roads or their roads, this is one county and we need to be together on that. And so I did, of course, seek out input from people who live in Dubuque. Of course I did. And those folks volunteered information quite rapidly. So it is beyond just small cities and towns. It is an all-county approach. And I'm happy to share more with you. If you've seen my letter to the editor, my guest opinion, which I asked them to run, they didn't approach me and I also had that same opinion. I asked the Cascade Pioneer and the Dyersville Commercial to run it as well because I want all of the county papers to know where I am. And I'm fine with you asking me questions, unfortunately not this evening, but I want to be that kind of supervisor for you so that we may have reached a different conclusion tonight, I hope doesn't end your relationship with the relationship you want to build with me.
Thank you, Ann. And I will also state that when I, when I ran for office, I said I would listen to all sides of an issue. And sometimes there's more than two sides to an issue. So when this first came up, I didn't even know that there were numerous towns in Dubuque County that had already passed ordinances. I found this out because I was meeting with the mayor of Cheryl, Dave Behringer, on a drainage issue. Now, he was contending that, it was right on the county-city line. Of course, he was contending that it was in the county and, you know, I said, "Listen, I can't comment on that, we have to have our GIF expert take a look at that." But I went and looked at it and he said he would meet me at the firehouse. We pulled in on a John Deere Gator and I said, "Aren't you pushing things a little bit?" And he's like, "Oh, we've had an ordinance here for two years." And, you know, he said, "We have, we've had no trouble with it, everything is going well." The other night, he grabbed me and he said, "Don't, just make sure that they don't come after our, our ordinance because we, we like it." And I said, "You know, what they do in the cities is up to them and the county doesn't have jurisdiction there." So anything that we would do here, pro or con, doesn't affect Cheryl and it wouldn't affect Asbury. And I know Asbury went on record and, you know, if the Asbury City Council and the Dubuque City Council, we heard from some of those folks as well, that'd be up to them, it's not up to this board. But, so, and then I found out today that every town in Delaware County has enacted or adopted an ordinance, except for Dyersville. Dyersville is in Dubuque and Delaware County, but Dyersville does not have the ordinance for Delaware County. But all other, all other towns have adopted the ordinance in Delaware County. And, you know, I know that, you know, some of this, and I don't think we have to apologize, I don't think there's apologies necessary for the folks that are in favor of this, that having recreational opportunities and family fun, I don't think that's anything to be ashamed of. Some of the folks have argued that the UTVs and ATVs are actually safer than some of the other vehicles that are out there. The first thing that comes to mind is our bicycles. Now, the state took care of the bicycle issue. Bicycles can go on any road or highway in the state of Iowa with the exception of interstate highways. This board recently approved a, I believe it was a 68-mile loop in the northern part of the county for bicyclists. And it includes being on Highway 52 for a period of time, up through Cheryl, Waltown, over the Ridge Road, and makes a nice loop. What they came to us-
That is not this board, sir. I did not vote on that.
The-
That's a previous-
County Board of Supervisor, I stand corrected. Okay. It was unanimous vote of the previous board. And so, in researching that, and I'll lay that out because I was kind of asking, I was asking some questions about that and we find out the state already grants them access and the folks were very organized. We probably got, I'm just guessing, estimating 300 to 400 emails in support of that. And they showed up and then they also said, all they were asking for was signage that they would pay for. They raised the money to pay for, about $5,500. The only reason, the only thing we could have done if we just said no, which we could have done, would have been to not have the signage because they were already informally using that route. using that route, that loop. So, we felt that having signs would probably, we believe, promote safety. In other words, it would do two things, it would alert motorists that there were bicycles, and it would tell people from out of town which direction the route would go, which we thought was a win-win. So, we approved that by a three-to-nothing vote. And, you know, I think there are some similarities with that. In this case, the state has deferred to the counties and the cities to make their decisions. The state has said it's okay for UTVs and ATVs to operate on the roads for farm use, for agricultural use. I have no problem with that, and I'm not, anything we do here wouldn't change that. Matter of fact, I support that. I talked to several farmers during this process, and some of them said, "I don't know, you know, I use my ATV or UTV as a tool, don't really want to bounce around on weekends, I'd rather ride my Harley." And I get that. But there's others that use, you know, their UTVs or ATVs on the farm, and then they want to get out with friends on the weekends. And, you know, there's nothing wrong with that. And, you know, I know that there are folks that have said, "Let's let them, let's let them go on trails, or let's devise a trail system that follows the highways, so they're off the road." And, and that sounds good. I'm looking around the room, I don't think too many of us would be here if we waited for that to happen in our lifetime. There's cost issues, there's right-of-way issues, so to me, that wasn't realistic. And then, when, during the committee meeting, the one that I was, that I did attend, when there was discussion on Heritage Trail, using Heritage Trail, and I think Brian Preston was there, but I think there were people on the committee as well that were like, "Well, no, we don't want you on Heritage Trail." So, you know, it was a, I, I think, sounded good, sounded like an alternative, but in reality, it's not going to happen. Not in our lifetime. I hope it happens someday, but I'm 61-years-old, hope to live, you know, quite a few more years, so I can see my grandchildren and great-grandchildren, which I have three of, grow up. But I just don't see that as viable alternative. So, if, you know, if tonight, if we say no, we're saying no, and those folks are going to go to, you know, they're going to continue to go to Clayton County, Delaware County, Jones County, Jackson County, Grant County, and anywhere in Wisconsin, anywhere in South Dakota, or 37 or 38 other states.
Thank you. My, my two points I mentioned that were balancing between public safety and citizen input and access, and so I'd be curious to your comments on, on public safety. The two areas that I have difficulty with, and that give me pause, is, one, the safety aspect of ATV, UTVs being smaller, obviously being more vulnerable on the road with larger vehicles. And then, the second one, Supervisor Baker, you hit on, is, is the youth ridership. And having youth, underage people, less than 16, without driver's licenses, having access to ATV, UTVs, that seems to be happening throughout the county, I've heard that multiple times. And so, those, those are kind of my two issues, I'd be curious to my colleagues' thoughts on those, and if they also give you pause.
Are you aware that there's been two fatalities during, while this time has been pending before you? So, someone died in Bernard, and someone died in Worthington. So, I don't know what the standard is in terms of safety, you know? Clearly, people die on these vehicles. And of course, people have tragic accidents on other things, farm life, at, at your job, unfortunately, people still die at work. But I just want to know, is that something that you've reflected on, Jay? That we had fatalities while this has been pending? And, you know, when I asked individuals last week at our open session, what would they perceive to be a fail of any kind of trial basis? The answer was, they couldn't understand what a, what a failure might be. How might a trial of ATVs on our roads fail? Well, I mean, are we going to count fatalities? Is, is that the standard? We're the largest county, population-wise, not square footage-wise, but population-wise, to be presented with this question. The other small communities and counties where you go, in Iowa, there's only one community that even has 20,000 people, you, you know that, I'm not telling you anything you don't know. But that's five times, our population is five times greater. The vehicle traffic on our roads is different, and I can tell you from the same message you have, Supervisor Baker, from our county engineer, he addresses that, that our topography is more rugged. He talks about differences between Delaware County and Dubuque County. The terrain is obviously more rugged in Dubuque, more curvy, narrow roads. This, again, this is our county engineer, who also is the county engineer for Delaware County, this is his opinion. This will be far more difficult in Dubuque County. There are high-traffic roads that would be dangerous. There are very few towns who allow ATVs, even if they allow them in their town, to put them on their main roads. It's almost impossible to build connectors between the communities that allow ATVs. We're going to have a system that's more complex, that's more difficult. Those are his words, those are not mine. So, I think that that's a, those are distinctions that have not been made, other than they're contained in, you know, the 600-page manual here that was put before us. So, there are differences between our counties, and I think it's important that we note that. And I would say to you, Supervisor Wickham, that that's a significant thing about safety, regardless of, you know, the operator's manual and the caution that's on all the vehicles, right? The caution that says, "Never use on public roads." Regardless of that, other safety issues come before us, too, that talk about the differences in our counties, in size, in road intersect, in vehicle traffic. You can take major freight, major movement of traffic, up 20, up 52, 136. I mean, we, we crisscross our county with major traffic, because we are a different type of county than Delaware, than Clayton, than Jackson. So, I mean, I think that goes to safety. So, I would ask you if there's other safety things, I mean, certainly, if you've been doing this for two years, I have not, maybe you can give me input into safety things that I should be thinking about, that, that you've come to learn. I've certainly learned a lot in this, in my time in looking at this. I've tried to look aggressively and seriously at the issues and the, the expertise that's contained in this manual. I think there's been some great things put forth from, and, and I also give deference to Sheriff Kennedy. He is your, my elected public official. Well, you know, whether you voted for him or not, he is the public servant for Dubuque County who addresses public safety. So, I had a Jackson County supervisor say to me, "They can't imagine doing this without their sheriff right with them." And that, that's significant, that our sheriff's not there. Change who he is. Come back with a new sheriff, he's got a new perspective. I think that's an important message to send. So, to you, Jay, if you have other questions about safety, what can I help you with? I, I thought this, you know, the information presented by the committee was extensive.
I appreciate you sharing that. So, I, yes, I, I have many of the same concerns and questions that, that you have, and I'm glad to hear that you echo those related to the manufacturer sticker I've asked in public a couple of times, when we had manufacturers' representatives here from the various vendors. I said, "How do you, how do you square that? How do you square the-"
They're selling things.
The manufacturer's warranty, or not the warranty, excuse me, the, the warning label with other areas. And I, I have, you know, various responses to that, but that, that does give me pause. And so, I appreciate you sharing those with you, and, and it may, may have been a redundant question, but yes, obviously fatalities strike dear to everyone's heart, regardless of the type of fatality when it occurs on a public road. I feel a type of ownership, and we, we have those in various capacities. Why they elect us, why we have a county engineer, you know, why we have deputy sheriff patrols is to try to minimize those, and, and do our best to create an environment that people can thrive and work, feel safe in. So, that was one of my other ones. The, the other piece, if you'd be itching commenting on, or discussing, would be the youth access. That's the other piece that gives me pause and concerns me, that today, we have a moratorium, we have prohibition against riding ATVs, we write very little tickets, we, we don't have a, a large enforcement on that, there's a variety of issues related to how and why, but it occurs. And so, I heard from numerous constituents that they're driving dune bugs, they've got ATVs, there's kids on a golf cart. And I will confess, I was on a golf cart with as many people as we could in Thunder Hills with my buddies when we were in the 1970s. And so, unfortunately, sometimes that's what kids do, if kids think they can, they can get away with it. But that, that's an area that I would like to focus on and, and see what we can do to, to address, or at least discuss.
I had also, the other night, during the public comment, Mr. Sint was here, and he did address, you know, the issue, the manufacturers, he's, I'm not going to quote, but I'll paraphrase that, they don't come equipped with turn signals, and now, they can be retrofitted, but that's, in his opinion, at least one of the reasons why they are not recommended by the manufacturers.
That was the main reason that he could come up with, is that they didn't have turning signals.
So, you agree that that's what he said?
You focused on that as being almost exclusively the reason, which I think flies in the face of all the evidence. He sells these, he sells these, he said, "Business has been better, this is the future, this is coming, it's been three years in the making, and it's, you know, going across the country," and he's excited, he's going to sell more, more vehicles. And that's his motivation, he, he also said that, "That's my motivation, it's going to be a great year for me." And he's a small business, so yay for him, but I don't know that he's your input on, on safety equipment. I mean, I didn't find him to be persuasive, I thought it was, I mean, not very credible, that the only thing that would make an ATV or a UTV not roadworthy would be the lack of a blinker. Those were his words, "The lack of a blinker."
I find Mr. Sint to be very credible, and I don't hold success against anybody in business.
Agreed.
One of the things that I have equated this with, and it's been pointed out to me some, from some of my friends, and most, many people know me, I have friends that are Harley guys and gals, and I'm proud of that. At one time, there was a group called Bikers for Baker in the Labor Day Parade. Some people, you know, maybe if they hang around the country club or other places, maybe that wouldn't be attractive to them, or they wouldn't try to put that up front. I come from the north end, actually the point area of Dubuque. I punched a clock for many years, like a lot of folks that are promoting this. You know, I, I equate this, and it's been pointed out to me, that, you know, in Iowa, you know, motorcycles are okay on our roads, and it's a choice of whether or not they want to wear a helmet. And to me, this is similar to that, it's not identical, but it's similar. Some people don't like the government telling them what we can and can't do. And in this case, I believe that if we have an ordinance that addresses safety, that, no. Ann pointed out that there have been some fatalities. The one was in, actually in Jackson County, at 1:30 in the morning, south of Bernard. It's unfortunate, and it wasn't the driver that was killed, I believe it was the passenger. That case may be pending, so, I don't know any of the names. And then, there, there were, there have been other fatalities involving medical issues involving people. I don't want to get into specifics. I will say this, I was told that there was a, on one fatality, the person had a medical issue that he died from. And there was another where it was questionable whether the person had the, what, eyesight, proper eyesight, he was visually challenged, I guess is the proper term. So, I hate, you know, but accidents can happen. I think if we have an ordinance with focus on safety, I think, you know, minimize those. You know, there's a, my friend Bill Hamel has a history of Dubuque on Facebook, I don't know if many of yous read it. I was reading the other day that a wagon, a pin broke on a wagon, a woman got thrown and got killed. I don't think they surrounded the Cooper Wagon Works with picket signs to shut them down after that happened. You know, it was unfortunate, it was an accident. And until the dreaded automobile came around, Cooper was, you know, one of the top wagon producers in the country. So, again, I think we have the expertise, working for Dubuque County, to put together a safe ordinance. And we have, our county attorney has said we should review all the roads. Absolutely, we need to do that. I've had disagreements and arguments with people who are for this over turn signals. You know, it might cause a financial hardship for some folks. Might be, might, you know, that might be a safety issue that, you know, might help save lives. Other things to consider are, you know, the safety flags, the big tall orange flags as an alternative. I think those type of things are, you know, we need to look at. Having a speed limit, I think it was suggested 35 miles an hour. Seat belts, if the vehicle has seat belts. Insurance would be mandated. I also talked to County Recorder Murphy, because it was brought up by some law enforcement folks. And by the way, law enforcement is kind of split up on this. Some of the rank-and-file people have contacted me in favor of the ordinance, some of our very own sheriff's deputies. They're not really wanting to get sideways with the sheriff, so you're not going to see him here testifying. But that's a fact. But that's a fact. But one of the issues that was brought up is, you know, if we try to pull somebody over, they might run with their four wheeler through the field or woods and we won't be able to identify them. I asked county recorder Murphy if he, if, if this passes, would he be able to work on a county sticker? Nice bright fluorescent, four by four, five by five with big numbers that could be stuck on the vehicle in, in view. And he said he thought that he could do that, but he didn't want to do anything until we had this meeting. But he thought that there would be something like that and that also another issue was, you know, all these people are going to come in and they're going to drive on our roads and we're not going to get any money out of them. He said that he believes that we could have a county fee for road access for that sticker. So that's, I know that's probably the less important of all the issues we're discussing, but I did discuss that with him. And again, on the issue of four wheelers shouldn't be on the roads because they can run through the woods and the fields. We have motorcycles that are considered street and trail. They're licensed for the street. They could do the same thing and they've got little bitty license plates on them. That's just, you know, trying to address safety and enforcement. And, and I do think, you know, this will take some self policing. I had some good discussions with some folks about, you know, reporting violations and not just tolerating them. And I think that that needs to get out there. And I believe that the, the people that are for this will help to police this. And if they see or become aware of problems, they'll report it.
I'm just curious, how a supervisor can determine that your, your view and your analysis is, can, you can disregard our county sheriff and the liability of the county? How, how can you do that? That is what people elect us to do, is to do the business of the county. How, I just want to know how you square that, Dave? How do you say, you know, you know better than the sheriff and you know better than the county attorney about these issues?
I didn't say I know better than anybody. I disagree with the sheriff on this. The sheriff didn't want to listen to this. You know, he, he used the example of the four boys in Eppworth and that was a tragedy. There was no ordinance in place when that happened. And, you know, I mean, since then, numerous towns, including Eppworth, have passed the ordinance. Again, I've heard from law enforcement professionals, from other counties and from our own county and therefore. So this is not a dictatorship, it's a democracy. And I respect Sheriff Kennedy. We have a disagreement on this issue. I don't want to interpret county attorney May's letter, apparently you are. But I read that our liability, and I'm paraphrasing, we would have liability if we opened up all the roads without, without reviewing them. And also that there's an exemption for counties and municipalities in the state on litigation. But anybody can sue anybody over anything. And I choose not to let lawyers run the country. I think they can give us direction. But you know what? Nothing would get done, nothing would get done if we had to strictly listen to legal advice. I, I can tell you from my previous experience in collective bargaining, we did not want to have lawyers at the table. We knew the parameters. I remember being in negotiations with a company here in Dubuque and corporate shipped in an attorney from New Orleans. And we got down to the nitty gritty and the general manager of the company, we showed up the, what was the last day of negotiations? And I said, where's your attorney? He said, I sent him packing. I wanted to get this done. So no offense to anybody who's an attorney in here. But I do not want to let attorneys run the world. I will listen to their advice and try to work within those parameters.
So same question to you Supervisor Wickham. How can you disregard the sheriff and the county attorney's legal opinion?
Well, I have two attorneys in my family, so, so I'm not going to take the path that Supervisor Baker did.
I have at least one.
And right now I'm on really good terms with them. Our powers at Dubuque County are given to us by the state of Iowa, by the legislature, okay? So, so we don't get to create powers that don't exist on the laws from the state of Iowa from the legislature. And I believe that's, that's correct. If our county attorney wants to jump in and correct me at any point, do, please do. And so the only governing body in Dubuque County that can create a Dubuque County ordinance is this board. And those in law enforcement, including the sheriff, by state code are responsible for enforcing those. And by state code, our county attorney is responsible for interpreting, prosecuting or defending those. Close?
Fair statement.
So that's, that's, that's the power that's given to this board, not me, by the state of Iowa. And I swore to uphold state of Iowa constitution and the constitution of the United States. And so it's clearly in our power and it's clearly what Dubuque County Attorney May said. In fact, this is the language she said. Quote, "You clearly have legal authority to regulate the use of the Dubuque County secondary roads." And that would include allowing the operation of registered all train vehicles or off-road vehicles on the secondary roads that you deem appropriate. So our county attorney has delegated that authority by state law to this board. That's, that's the position I have that was granted to me by the electorate in Dubuque County and the legislature, the state of Iowa. But I state, our county attorney, our county sheriff and really anyone as a citizen or that I come in, I, I respect their opinion. I, I take their input, I take their feedback, but at the end of the day, the power in the decision is the Board of Supervisors, which is us three.
So county attorney May, we're parsing your words. You agreed with the legal analysis as set forth by county attorney Ralph Potter. That is how you open your letter?
I, he, my, my feeling was he was, you know, he was somewhat interjecting some of his personal opinions into that letter. So his comments specifically about the Baldwin case and some other kind of legal bases, I do agree with that.
Can't hear you, can you speak up please?
I'm sorry, I said, I, I do agree with what he was saying about the Baldwin case, which I think at the time was still pending, which is now out, but.
And what does that case say?
Well, it was a case where the Iowa Supreme Court was sent a certified question from the federal court about whether a, a citizen would have a constitutional right to bring a claim against a governmental entity. And, and so in, in that specific, and it went back again, but in any event, it, it appears that our Iowa Supreme Court would be leaning toward that yes, there is sort of a direct cause of action out of the Iowa constitution against a governmental entity. Now, they didn't really define it overly largely from there, but that seems to be kind of the inclination.
So it opens the door to liability?
It can. I mean, I, I think, you know, under the statute that I cited in, in my letter and, and the other statutes, but, I mean, I think there's, there's always liability. And I think in this case, I think that, you know, the duty of care and Supervisor, you know, McDonough, you, you remember kind of from law school 101, the, you know, the elements of any tort action or what? There's a, there's a duty of care and then there's a breach of that duty and there's proximate cause and then there's damages, right? And any civil case, a plaintiff has to prove every single one of those elements and failure to prove one, the case fails. So in, in, as I read, the, all the statute says they intertwine in this issue that, you know, your, your duty of care is a little higher because it's by statute says that you have to evaluate the road conditions and you designate the road you deem appropriate for the time periods as long as it doesn't interfere with, and it seems like the saving clause is doesn't, I mean, I can read it, but the kind of, that does interfere with regular vehicular traffic. So there's a lot of things to square in that, it seems to me.
So if you were going to write the headline for the Telegraph Herald tomorrow about the county attorney's opinion, do you think that opening the roads increases the liability of Dubuque County or do you not?
I don't think it increases the liability. I think it, I think the statute has a higher duty of care than it, than a municipality has. So for instance, you know, a, a commercial owner of property has a higher duty of care to its customers than any of us have to people that come on our, our residential property. To me, it's sort of a similar analogy. Does that make sense? So I don't think, I don't think it increases the liability. I think it's just that to put it in place, I think you have more duties to exhaust, to do it, to do it in conformance with the statute's requirements.
I'm, every time one of our vehicles goes out on the road, I think we have a certain amount of liability. We have our, our men and women that are out there plowing snow for 12 and 14 hours are subject to liability. Again, I probably, my words, I guess, probably aren't as pretty as Supervisor Wickham's. I probably am, you know, I'm, I kind of wear, tend to wear my emotions out of my sleeve. But this has been, this decision has been two years in the making. I intentionally didn't broadcast where I was at. Some people that I talked to felt, you know, that they, that I was leaning and that's okay. But over the last two or three weeks, since Supervisor McDonough announced her intentions, I fielded a lot of phone calls from people for and against. And I'm glad that I did that and I'm glad I had the chance to talk to folks. So anyway, any other discussion?
I, I appreciate the feedback on public safety. I would like to discuss a little bit about citizens' right of access to public spaces and how that would include UTV, ATVs. And so maybe I'll start and then if there's any other comment. You know, I think you touched on it a little bit that you've got, you know, a variety of other types of transportation that are allowed on roads. And I had a short list, you know, and I don't want to take analogies too far because there's only so far you probably should take them. But you know, on our county roads, you can walk, you can run, you can ride a bike, you can ride a moped, you can ride a horse. You can ride a horse with a buggy, you can drive a tractor, you can ride a motorcycle. Today, can't ride an ATV, UTV. And so that's a separate class. Why? And so I think we talked a little bit about that, but that's probably what the group's saying is, hey, we, we want, what I'm hearing, as citizens, as taxpayers, as law abiding people, we want a fair shake in having those opportunities that the others on the list I just mentioned have. I think the other piece related to citizen access is we're not the first. This isn't riverboat gambling, 1989, Dubuque County was the first. So we are probably in the middle. I think there's already, you mentioned 48 counties, if that's accurate, that already have some type of ordinance in Iowa. Numerous local governments, numerous other states. That was been through our research that we discovered that. I didn't know it was so prevalent and, you know, I just, I don't have a UTV, I don't have an ATV. I don't travel places to, to do that type of activity. So I was unaware. So my inclination from a public vantage point related to the licensing, the manufacturing, the use, they all tend to be trending towards the direction of more use and more acceptance in the public. And so a question to, to my colleagues supervisors, what do you think about that? What do you feel about that? Do you, you, are you seeing the same things I am?
I'm not sure what it is you're saying, Jay.
I'm, I'm saying there seems to be more use and acceptance of ATVs and more governance related to the use of ATVs on public roads in the last 10 years than there ever has before.
So would you support that in this case?
I, I'm, I'm just saying that that's what I'm observing right now.
And so you're still observing that here tonight? You don't know how you feel about that?
Well, I, I have a direction, but I thought the intent of the meeting was to us for deliberating. So I'm encouraging that and I've been very appreciative of both your comments. If, if either of you are done with your comments, I'm, I'm happy to proceed. Don't like to be the lecturer up here, I usually like to engage with people. I manage a lot of salespeople and if you do that, they're out. They're like, I'm, I'm not interested. And so this is a unique government process that we've had because I think we've had a lot of the public input. I feel really good about the public input and so, but I haven't spoken to you about this. The only conversation we've ever had was that, that day at the women's farm and it's all for like 12 seconds, so, but.
Well, we have spoken informally before I was sworn in. So I'm still, I'm still unsure what your question is that you want me to give you feedback on.
Just if you are seeing the same things that I am related to increased public use and public acceptance on public roadways of ATV, UTVs in our region and nationwide, if you're interested in discussing that. And same thing with Supervisor Baker, to both of you.
I, I'm happy to jump in. You said motorcycles. Again, formerly a motorcycle enthusiast, hip replacement and major back surgery later, it's not a good idea for me. But motorcycles are changing as well. As the baby boomers age, more and more are going to trikes, three wheeled motorcycles. They're out there on the road. I don't think there was any, they've been around for a while, but there's more and more of them now. I don't think there was any hubbub about those being allowed on roads. Sometimes they pull trailers, motorcycles and trikes. But there's also another vehicle out there, it's called the Spyder, the Can-Am Spyder. That's a four wheel vehicle, similar to UTVs and ATVs. I think it's probably classified as a motorcycle because they go really fast or they can go really fast. But there's no special exemption needed for those vehicles. In some respects, I think the UTVs and ATVs may be safer than, than some of those. In some respects, I think UTVs and ATVs may be safer than some of those that I just mentioned. And then, you know, South Dakota, which is a neighboring state, is open for UTV and ATV. And Sioux Falls, which is just a stone's throw across the Iowa border, bigger city than Dubuque, I'm not sure exactly what the population is, somebody could probably Google it, but I had been told by some folks that were out there that there's UTVs and ATVs right in town. And again, not suggesting that for our counterparts with the city of Dubuque. I think we really do have a tale of two areas. We have the population center of Dubuque and Asbury, and neither one of those, I believe, has any intention of enacting an ordinance. But tell somebody that it's risky to take Ridge Road from Ball Town over to Holy Cross for dinner. I had somebody tell me that that happens quite often already. So, I think, you know, I think it's time, so.
Well, I don't know anything about spiders. I don't. Captain Potoff, do you want to address the issue for Supervisor Wickham about something about different kinds of vehicles? Can you help me, please?
Spiders are classified as a road vehicle.
So, they're roadworthy, they're designed to be on the roads?
Yes.
And ATV, UTV is not designed to be on a road?
The manufacturer do not recommend it for road use.
And also, you had other issues. Supervisor Wickham, maybe Captain Potoff can answer those for you, too?
If he has an opinion he wants to voice, the chair would allow it, fine, but I'm really interested in your opinions.
I guess I'm just unsure. Do you want me to discuss ATVs and UTVs? I mean, I'm not sure what you want me to say.
Fine, I'm not, that's okay. That's fine. I'm not asking you to say any, just interested in dialogue if there is. But if we're done with dialogue...
I think I'm done.
It's been a good hour.
Supervisor, you're done, and do you have anything else you want to add?
Well, I mean, I would make the first motion, and that would be to deny the petitioner's request to open the Dubuque County roads for off-road vehicle access. This motion would serve to maintain the current prohibition of off-road vehicles, except as allowed by the state of Iowa. My motion.
Respect your motion and your opinion, but I will not be seconding it.
Nor will I. Motion dies for a lack of a second. I'm going to make a motion that we move forward with the, with an ordinance, and as part of that, that we form a committee to address safety issues, including for operators and vehicles and roads and any other, and that include the appropriate county staff. Kind of a long-winded, but I didn't have mine typed up.
So, I will second that, and I would like some discussion.
It's open for discussion.
I, too, have some of my notes related to moving forward with an ordinance. And so, I would be a yes, but. And so, the piece I would be interested in doing would be a limited trial, and so have the opportunity to have conditions on the actual ordinance itself. And generally, these conditions not to be, you know, identified and ironed out right here, but in general, they would be the routes that would be banned, the routes that would be opened. As County Attorney May specified, I think if we determine those routes, that's within our statute. Certainly understanding what equipment is allowed and what we're discussing, there's a lot of terms out there related to ATV, UTV, side-by-side. The safety piece, I think, is large. We hit on that, sounds like there's agreeance in there. The registration was on my list as well, and the ban potential on the Heritage Trail, that a few citizens, more than a few, say, hey, that's off, right? You're not considering that. And I think it is at this point. I think the Heritage Trail and its current condition and use is very well designated. And then finally, to have basically the ordinance expire at a certain period. So, whether that's one year, two years, whatever the timeframe would be, to give elected officials a chance, along with the citizens, to come back together and say, is this what we thought we were agreeing to? Do we want to continue this? And that would give current board and/or possibly future boards, you know, that pause to be able to see if it's working and to ratify it, so to speak, for another period. And I had a comment about implementation team is what I called it. So, we've kind of gone through the citizen phase, I think we should go through the government phase. And so, that includes our county engineer, probably includes one of our elected officials that we have up here, certainly would include law enforcement, would include legal review of the ordinance as well. And to work out and iron out the details, to get a document to come before this board so that then we can approve and know what we are saying yes or no to, as opposed to what I view tonight's decision as a direction, not an actual final answer. And really, I see it as the beginning as opposed to the end. So, in general, that was my conversation. I'm not asking any specifics to be tied into your motion, but if you're open to that, and then Supervisor McDonough, I would certainly invite and encourage if you have conditions or other areas that you would like to express, be very, very interested in hearing this.
Interested in hearing my views about your motion?
No, about the future ordinance, about the ordinance, and crafting the language of the ordinance, the details, the conditions. I think it should be an inclusive process.
I think all those in discussion, all those suggestions are good ideas. And when I brought up the Heritage Trail example, that wasn't me saying that it should be opened up, it was that there really isn't a place in Dubuque County for these vehicles other than the roads.
And I just want to be sure that in purpose of discussion, that it's clear to the entire Dubuque business community and to the entire county, that the step forward tonight is to allow off-road vehicles that are not designed, manufactured, or considered safe on county roads, you're allowing that to go forward. I just want to be sure we are clear about that.
I'm clear that that's your opinion. Is there anything else?
I think the other last piece that we probably should just discuss would be the timeframe of that ordinance. Is a month, two months? Congress might take six years or longer, but what do you feel is appropriate and acceptable as far as to move forward with an ordinance that would come back for us? And it might, we might not get it right in the first draft, but any thoughts?
Is that appropriate with the motion before us to go forward?
I think it's just discussion, but I don't, to answer your question, I really don't know, it's just discussion. I'm kind of trying to give the public an idea as if, when they would anticipate that this would have an ordinance and it's constructed, whether that's next week or next year.
I think that's for a future date to be determined.
In discussion, my opinion would be, two months would be ambitious, but I think it could be done.
And Mary had mentioned three meetings for an ordinance.
Right.
Okay. So, that's another factor.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. All right.
I think those are my discussion points.
All right. There's no other discussion. The motion's been made to move forward with the UTV, ATV ordinance. As we have discussed, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. I'm going to ask that we do that again, I'm asked that the, nobody speak, because I don't want anybody to misunderstand the vote. So, I'm going to ask again, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
The motion is carried. All right, is there any other business to be brought forward tonight?
We need a motion to receive and file County Attorney May's legal opinion.
Was that?
We can't.
That was suggested by our auditor. I don't know where it went.
I'm comfortable with doing that.
Does that need to be on the agenda? Why don't we put it on, let's, what's that? Yeah, let's put it on for the next meeting, okay? All right, any other business? I understand a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried. Meeting's adjourned.